All right. Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It's Monday, February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four, ten oh-three A.M. My name is Tom Mensur, Chair of the Board. With me is Commissioner Emily Klaus and Commissioner Gary Edwards is on Zoom. Commissioner Fornier is excused this morning and Commissioner Mahia will be joining us shortly. For public virtual attendance, please follow along on the Thurston County YouTube Channel. And Commissioner Mahia is here. Assistant County Manager Gil, do you want to make a preliminary announcement?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Just for folks that may be watching our livestream, we did have some issues with our cameras last week. We believe we have those all taken care of, but just in case someone, as they're watching livestream, experiences any type of glitch, we are still recording and we have audio, but hopefully it's all resolved.
Okay, thank you. We have three items on this morning's agenda. The first one is Public Defense caseload standards. We have Patrick O'Connor, our Director of Public Defense, to present this. And if nothing else preliminary, I'll just pass it over to Patrick. Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Mahia. Can you hear us? We didn't do a sound check with those guys.
It's muted. I think you're...
Yeah.
The computers?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay. I have, I don't know. Rob, did you receive the email I sent you this morning?
I got one from, yes, from Taylor in regards to Substitute House Bill Twenty-Sixty-Five.
Yes, could we discuss this right now?
Certainly. It is, it's, I would refer to Commissioner Mensur, but yes, this is a bill that is moving. It's currently in Senate Ways and Means that's scheduled to be exact out at ten A.M. this morning. Well, anytime now. And specifically, this is an act relating to recalculating sentencing ranges for currently incarcerated individuals who offenders score was increased by juvenile convictions no longer scorable under current law and allowing them to apply for resentencing without scoring those juvenile convictions. The concern that we have is not necessarily to the policy, but just currently, as the request came out from the Washington State Association of Counties, is that there is no funding to help to support the workload that may come with this legislation. It looks like it is moving. And Commissioner Mahia, I have received that call from, as a member of the Legislative Steering Committee, to reach out to Senator Hunt to request that it not move forward. Commissioner, anything else?
No, I think that covers it very well, and it's at ten-thirty. So that's why I had asked for it to be addressed early this morning. And so basically, my ask from the Board is, I guess, just letting Deborah know to maybe, I'm not sure if she can sign in opposition now or even testify, but see if there's a possibility she can catch Senator Hunt. I did send an email in with concerns about, not, you know, the specifics of the bill, but the funding aspect of it. The House passed it, but they did not tie any funding along with it. So if the Senate does pass it, there probably won't be any funding tied to it as well. So it's just gonna put us in a very difficult situation. And so just, I guess, asking the Board for support to reach out to Deborah and kind of have her, see if, you know, she can let Senator Hunt know that we are opposed to it if it does not have funding attached to it.
There should be a board concurrence, so I can reach out to Deborah easily. Better now.
Is this, you said this is regarding juvenile points? Is this like kind of a continuation from last year's bill where the juvenile, it wasn't retroactive? And this would bring back retro?
Yep, yes.
I mean, I would, I support the bill, so I wouldn't be able to, I understand the funding aspect, but I wouldn't be able to say some, sign anything or condone anything that says that as a board reados support that just based on funding. I think it's a good bill. Regardless, you know.
Commissioner Klaus, how would you suggest the county pay for it?
Well. I mean, I'm not a legislator for a reason, but I would say if, you know, this bill...
The responsibility of funding would come, it's not the legislator, it's on us. And so again, I am not, you know, my request is for us to let them know that we cannot support this without the funding mechanism. And the funding mechanism is what falls on the counties. And we're already struggling to fund several aspects of things. So I'm just, especially with cuts that we had to make last year, I, I'm not sure how we would fund this.
Yeah, I do think that that's a very legitimate concern. I just, it's an important bill, and last year I was really saddened to see that the retroactivity part was dropped from the language. Is there some way?
We can always convey to Deborah, right, that, as Commissioner Mahia mentioned, the concern is around the funding to support the work. It's not necessarily the policy, but to convey through Deborah to Senator Hunt the support of the policy, but unless there is funding associated with it. So it really focuses our concerns on the funding aspect, not the policy itself.
Okay.
And at least convey to them that that's the concern.
Commissioner Edwards?
I just wanted to mention that I'm with Commissioner Mahia.
Um, I'm gonna put Pat on the spot since he's sitting right in front of us. I mean, is there, has anyone done back of the map in math about how this compares to Blake in terms of how many people had drug? You know, how many people with convictions and sentences have drug versus juvenile points? I mean, is it a quarter of the Blake volume? Is it half the Blake volume? I mean, is there a way to get a sense of scale?
I've, the only thing I've seen, I've tracked this bill very closely. I've seen some statewide numbers. I don't know Thurston County numbers, so I am already contemplating how we could implement this bill if those individuals impacted are entitled to be resentenced. I just don't have the numbers to give us a sense of how many cases that would be. And probably like Blake, we're talking about cases on a wide variety of resentencing scales. So a portion may end up being eligible for a sentence that would result in an immediate release, a short-term release. Some individuals may be serving a very, very, very lengthy sentence where they'll be eligible for resentencing, but there's no time pressure if they're serving a forty-year sentence and now they're looking at serving a thirty-year sentence and they're ten years into it. So, you know, there's a wide variety of cases that would be impacted. I don't, impacted, I don't have our numbers, so I don't know how many cases would be impacted. But I've already contemplated if the bill passes, how we could go about absorbing those representations with some creativity. But it would be an impact, there's more cases, there's no doubt about it. But, but I don't have the numbers, so I can't tell exactly how many individuals we would be potentially representing. Could be a hundred, could be three hundred, I don't know.
So just to clarify, I mean, the way, I wish that I would have read through this bill. I followed it closer last year, but I wasn't actually aware that the funding portion of it would fall on the counties for the workload. I guess that makes sense. But from what I'm hearing you explain, it seems like that workload would be staggered based off of what types of cases we're seeing.
That's a, that's a reasonable inference for me, right? It's similar to Blake. So we have a, let's say we have X amount of individuals that are now eligible to resentence. A portion of those individuals, just like in Blake, would be eligible to be resentenced and result in an immediate release or a short-term release in the next two, three months or something like that. And then we're gonna have a middle population where they're eligible to resentence, but even if the resentencing went their way, for example, they'd be released in two years, three years. And then another portion of defendants that would be eligible for a earlier release, but many, many years to come. So I just, again, I don't have the overall numbers or the composition of cases, but it's reasonable for me to assume that the composition of those cases would be similar to Blake, where we'd have a variety of individuals on sort of various tiers of immediate impact. So the later cases, we would tier out and say, well, you know, we'll provide that resentencing representation down the road because there's no immediate adverse impact to their release. Similar to what we did in Blake.
Do you know how many Blake cases you guys handled in those various tiers, like aggregate?
Oh, for resentencings? Don't hold me to this, but probably over a couple hundred.
And how many, how many staff, like, you got, like...
Got staff, yeah.
Remind me how many people we had to add to, like, handle that?
We did, good morning, Commissioner. Initially, none, so we absorbed the initial wave, myself included. And then we, OPD got state funding, we added two staff members. But that was a combination, that was to keep up with the resentencings and the thousands of vacations. So if I separated just the resentencings, it was probably an attorney's workload.
And then it's not just Patrick's office that carries that impact, it's also the courts, it's also the clerks, the prosecutor's office. So it, I, I know we added several positions for Blake, not only for the public defense, but for all those other ones as well. So this is just consideration that I think we really need to take seriously. And I thought it was timely, considering the conversation we're about to have next.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I guess I'm slightly between the two of you. I mean, I strongly support the policy, I strongly oppose the idea that they would, you know, this is gonna be pretty similar in scope to Blake. And the state allocated all these resources to us, and now they wanna do the same thing and allocate no resources to us? There's just a disconnect there. So I don't know if there's a way for Deborah to log in with that nuance of a position. I mean, if it's like checking a box, oppose or against, then we may have to take a vote. But I just feel like if, you know, I supported, I represented Washington Association of Counties on the sentencing guideline commission that considers this, and I was able to get their position to basically that, that we support the bill, but we, we, we express the need for county, you know, resources to address it. And apparently that message didn't get through in the House's work on this issue. So I would like to, I'd like to keep that same position, if that's possible, myself.
I can try to reach Deborah once Patrick gets started with his regularly appointed program. And then I can give a, try to reach after and convey that nuance of policy.
Yeah, that's, what was my suggestion. There's nothing in the policy that I'd oppose to, but it's the funding mechanism and how we're going to be able to fund that with, without any resources.
If she can communicate that message in avenues that she has, is that, Commissioner Klaus, I'm looking at you, are you okay with us communicating that position?
Um, I mean, I guess it would kind of come down to what you mentioned about, like, is it, you can convey that nuance, but ultimately are you saying, no, we would oppose this because of the funding piece? Because you can't really go in and testify in the middle, can you? I mean...
And there is no opportunity now, given where the bill is at, for testimony or taking a position, right? It is really just having an opportunity to reach out to legislators directly to convey those concerns. Because if exact out here, then the next step would be to go to, I mean, they're trying to get it scheduled for a floor vote.
Okay, well, as long as we're not, so I'm hearing majority opinion that we strongly, no concern about the policy, strong concerns about the lack of funding. And if that's being communicated to legislators, I think it sounds like at least three of us are comfortable with that position. And so let's, we could go forward on that basis. And then hopefully they, we're not, we're not, we don't have to, we're not being forced to check a box, we oppose the bill. It's gonna be more of a, we need funding added to this.
Okay, yeah, I would support that.
See if I can get hold of her.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, Pat. Back to your presentation.
Sure, no, thank you. And good morning again, Commissioners Patrick O'Connor, the Director of Thurston County Public Defense. I apologize, a little under the weather, but this is such an important topic. And thank you for your time. Just on a time check, do you want me to end at ten-thirty?
No. We have, we have two hours and we have basically two topics. So as far as I'm concerned, you can go to at least eleven if you need it.
Okay, okay.
An hour, okay for you guys?
Great. So I wanted to get some time with the Board on this work session following some news and some information that was shared with the Board, Commissioner Mahia, November of last year. And we wanted to get some time with the Board to bring these issues before the Board so we can start having conversations about significant changes in public defense as early as possible. And it frankly dovetails with the Commissioner's concern on Twenty-Sixty-Five, which is funding. So what I've put together today is covering a couple topics. So in Washington State, we have standards for public defense. The standards for public defense are in a process of significant change. Real watershed moment, frankly, for public defense. But my focus today is to touch upon the standards as it pertains to caseloads and the proposals that are gonna be submitted next month to the Washington State Bar Association and the State Supreme Court. How we got to this point from, from a national study to the American Bar Association recommending these types of changes, how we can apply those, how I anticipate them being applied in the state of Washington, and of course, the impacts to us at Thurston County. So take a step back for a second, and I know Commissioner Mahia is aware of some of these changes. And I think WASAC towards the end of last year sent out some information around the state that we can anticipate some changes in public defense as a result of the American Bar Association's study on public defense. So that study took place over the past three years with the Rand Corporation and a panel of experts that in three years studied public defense caseloads around the country. And as a result of those studies, they put forth their findings. And those national findings have been studied by the Council on Public Defense, which oversees public defense caseloads for the state of Washington. And they recommended to develop a standardized methodology for accounting for public defenders' time. Again, I won't get into the specifics of their study, but needless to say, those studies have significant impacts, not just in Washington State, but nationally. But I do wanna take a step back and walk through the history of the caseloads for public defenders in Washington State. Right now, currently, we have caseload standards that exist in Washington. Of course, those have been adopted by the State Supreme Court and the Washington State Bar Association. And for every county and municipality in the state of Washington, these standards must be complied with. And one of my jobs as the Thurston County Public Defense Director is to ensure that the county is complying with our state standards for public defense. The current standards, as I pointed out here, specific to caseloads. Again, I wanted to focus on caseloads conversation this morning because they're gonna have the most significant impact. And I think it's important that you understand what those impacts are going to be. It's a little perspective at this point, and I'll talk about that because the new standards aren't finalized. But similar to the conversation we just had, it's gonna be a significant impact on, on counties and municipalities in the state of Washington in terms of cost. So right now, as our caseloads exist, no public defender can represent more than a hundred and fifty felony clients, adult felony clients, two-hundred-and-fifty juvenile youth criminal representations, and no more than three-hundred misdemeanors. And those are adopted by the State Supreme Court. They're in our court rules, and we comply with those, those standards. So no county defense, public defender is representing more than any of those category of clients as such representations are prohibited in our standards. These standards have existed since the nineteen-seventies. So our current caseloads are based on nineteen-seventy-three studies. They were adopted in Washington, they've always been part of the Washington Defender Association Standards of Public Defense, but they were adopted in two thousand and twelve by the State Supreme Court. These standards, one of the significant flaws, and they've always been significant flaws, is they don't really distinguish between what types of cases. I give an example here where an attorney in our office could represent, we would not do this, but could represent a hundred and fifty homicide cases. And that's not distinguished between a hundred and fifty property offenses. So some significant flaws in the original methodology that's being rectified with the new recommendations. So talk a little bit about how this American Bar Association and Rand Corporation study was conducted. And again, not to get into the methodology too in the weeds, but there's a United States Supreme Court case, Strickland v. Washington. That was the defendant's name, not the state of Washington, from nineteen-eighty-four. And it really defined and drove what effective assistance a counsel actually means when it comes to public defense. And in this particular case, what was being challenged is the defender in the case had too many cases and wasn't providing effective representation under the Sixth Amendment right to counsel. So what the study did, they took a look at national time studies, professional norms for the work that we do. They looked at the rules of professional conduct and professional norms, and also the American Bar Association justice standards in developing this time study. Just to highlight a couple of the rules of professional conduct, as to why do we have caseload standards as public defenders? Well, they're based on the Strickland case and also the Washington rules of professional conduct. And I just highlighted some of those rules of professional conduct as to why we can only represent X amount of clients every year. And things like competency, illegency, attorney-client relationships, and literally one-point-seven-eight-two in the Rules of Professional Conduct for Attorneys basically says that a lawyer cannot take on more representations than they can effectively or competently represent. Common sense, right? At some point, an attorney has to turn clients away because they have too many cases. So you can apply that to, if you want to get a wills and trusts attorney to do your will and your attorney said, yes, I'll take your case, but unbeknownst to you, that attorney had five hundred cases and your will was delayed by a year, right? That attorney should have been ethically barred from taking your case. He or she should have said, no, I can't take any more cases. Well, as you know, we work on court appointments. So every time the court appoints us a new client, we are... we are required to appoint them counsel. And so we appoint them counsel up to the maximum number of cases currently existing in the state of Washington. So I do want to provide that background. If you're wondering why we have these standards, it's pretty common sense, but ultimately for my staff in particular, those are county attorneys that have to comply with the rules of professional conduct. Every year, quarterly, I should say, every attorney that's providing engine defense representations has to certify that they're in compliance with the Washington State Standards for Engine Defense. So what I've provided is just an example of what our attorneys and our conflict attorneys that provide engine defense certify and sign off to file with the court and the clerks of each court that they are in compliance with the caseloads, i.e. as an attorney under penalty of perjury, I am certifying that I am not in violation of the State Supreme Court standards on engine defense, i.e. I'm not taking too many clients. So our attorneys file these on a quarterly basis, as do our contractors. The reason I mention this and I wanted to put this in here is as the standards change, and they are changing, all county public defenders that work in my office and our conflict attorneys will have to certify that they're in compliance with the new State Supreme Court standards on caseloads. Okay, so please feel free at any point to interrupt and ask questions. But what the next slide indicates is where we're heading. And this is not a matter of if, but this is a matter of when. So I serve on the Washington Defender Association Board of Directors. I have attended countless meetings in the past three to four months with directors around the state. And the Council on Public Defense oversees caseloads, compliance and changes to caseloads for the state of Washington. And as of Friday, the recommendations for new caseloads came out of the W, the Washington Defender Association Board Meeting to the Council of Public Defense. And Council of Public Defense is now, is in the process of forwarding new recommendations on to the Washington State Bar Association's Board of Governors and the State Supreme Court. And that just happened on Friday.
Is that the one you serve on?
I'm on the Committee Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
Counties.
Right? So what this next slide demonstrates is just a very high level of what types of changes we're looking at. And the the new annual caseloads on the right is what was pushed forward to the State Supreme Court and Board of Governors for the Washington State Bar Association on Friday. So I want to just kind of highlight the significance of this change. So on the left are our current caseload standards that I went over earlier. If you look at my highlighted asterisks there, it gives you the context of what type of waiting system currently exists and what type of value of attorney hours we currently place on these types of cases and representations. So example, for adult felonies right now in our current caseloads, a defender is associated with eleven hours worth of work. For, that's from the initial representation of a defendant on an adult felony accusation all the way through trial. The total number of hours projected by for that attorney for that one case is eleven hours. Misdemeanors, so misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors. Perhaps even equally, if not more important, in my opinion, for the justice system is quality representation for misdemeanors. Our current misdemeanor representation hours dedicated under the standards is four hours worth of attorney work for each individual client. The current standards encourage case waiting, so recognizing that different cases are gonna require different hours of representation, so a homicide, for example, certainly isn't eleven hours worth of public defender work time. And our current standards encourage counties and municipalities to weigh those cases differently. We do do that, and that's something I put in place about six years ago was a case waiting system and a policy for us that recognizes that a murder representation should be more than eleven hours. We currently waited at thirty-six hours, though grossly inadequate, to be candid, but something in in a step towards really making the best representation possible, but also protecting my public defenders in their compliance with the rules of professional conduct. So one of our defenders doesn't come to me and say, I think I'm in violation of the Rule of Professional Conduct one point seven, I have too many clients. If you give me a new client, I won't be able to effectively represent them. The column on the right gives you a preview of what was just recommended in terms of changes to caseload standards. So what's being presented right now is a weighted system based on the study. It's a case credit method, so similar to waiting cases under the current standards, this type of proposal would wait, would give a specific weight depending on the type of case. And what's being presented right now are these case credits and the conversation around what is a case credit for what type of case. My next slide will kind of give you a preview of what that looks like. But it's a significant departure between a hundred and fifty adult felonies currently to forty-seven, and it's across the board, forty-seven juvenile clients as opposed to two hundred and fifty, and a hundred and twenty misdemeanor clients as opposed to three hundred. And again, these new standards are based on a study from the American Bar Association and vetting through the Council of Public Defense, which has a panel of lifelong expert public defenders that were not only several members were institutional, instituted the original standards, but have been working with the American Bar Association along the way. So we'll go to the next slide. Let me pause for a second. That's a, this is a, it would go back one second. This is a significant change in public defense.
Are you gonna talk about the credit, like, is a credit like, is a credit like, a robbery's two? Or is it like, I mean, what what does the scale look like and how do those credits?
Maybe we'll go to the next slide, Katie. So this is the, this is the findings from that National American Bar Association study, which our Council of Public Defense looked at. So what they did was they did time studies from around the country, from a variety of different sources, right? Contract attorneys, full-time public defenders working in offices. And what they produced was what the number of hours each defender should be working on a particular type of case. And so what you see here is a hierarchical categories of types of cases that are typical in the work that we do. So for example, Commissioner Mensah, if you took a look at a life without the possibility of parole appointment, so someone in our office is appointed to represent a client who's facing life without the possibility of parole, that defender should be working that case on average of the two hundred and eighty-six hours. Right? So that case credit in that case would say, if you're going to assign a public defender one of these types of cases, then that case should be credited with X amount of hours worth of work. Now, in an annual year, we know how many attorney hours our county attorneys should be working. It's six hundred, sixteen hundred and fifteen hour, fifty hours. And that's what our current standards apply in terms of number of hours an attorney can work in a year to develop a caseload. And that accounts for things like vacation and then sick time, FMLA, average things that happen to every county employee. So what we have here are the variety of categories. So obviously, when the American Bar Association did these studies, every state has different RCW, criminal laws, depending on what state they're in. So you couldn't really do apples to apples in terms of what is Missouri's robbery first degree versus Washington, right? So they did these categories of types of cases. Most of them are pretty intuitive. But applying those to Washington, the Council of Public Defense has gone through every criminal RCW and associated it in one of these categories. So a felony high case in Washington would be a life without the possibility of parole. But where we start to get into some of the differences is what's a felony low case in Washington? What's a felony low case in Washington that would be associated with a case credit of thirty-five hours, right? Something like a theft in the second degree, right? Something like a property crime that's in a felony case would be weighted appropriately in the new standards based on the American Bar Association study. So there's a variety of categories. We have a lot of RCWs. And the Council of Public Defense has already categorized and made those recommendations on each type of criminal offense in Washington and what category it should fall into based on the, based on the study. Does that answer your question?
Well, partly, but I mean, I just, I'm like, when you say, like, I don't know how to, on the previous slide, I don't know how, what forty-seven means because I don't know what, is a case credit like equivalent to a low felony? And then if it's a higher felony, then, you know, then it might be worth more than one credit. Is that what we're talking about or is it?
Yeah, so it would, it would, it would be a formula, right? So if if an attorney has sixteen hundred and fifty hours to work in a year and they got a high, high life without the possibility of parole appointment, then we would subtract two hundred and eighty hours off that attorney's sixteen fifty, and then that would be the case credit for that case. And we would then draw down the capacity for that attorney based on the the hours associated with that type of case to have their case credit now adjusted. So in that case, I'm taking a guess here because I haven't worked out the formulas. If that attorney got one high, high life without the possibility of parole appointment and their their maximum case credit for the year would be forty-seven, after that appointment, now they would have forty-two credits remaining the rest of the year. Just throwing out a number.
What's the point of the credit system? Like, why don't you just go by hours? Like, you know how many hours there are in a work year and you know how many, like, you know, and why don't you just subtract the hours like a ledger and then?
Yeah, I think the the practical application of this is understanding that we all have mixed caseloads, right? So an attorney may be assigned one murder case and then three theft two cases, and so.
And the hours would just be.
You're just adjusting the hours throughout the year.
Just creating some.
Yeah. And again, I think there's, there are formulas that are being worked on around the state on how to calculate this. I'm not there yet, but I'll give you an example. Well, I've got a couple of examples in the next couple of slides. Needless to say, just stepping back for a second, this is a significant, significant change in public defense. And my public defense hat is incredibly supportive of this. I've done the work my entire career. We have, we have never given public defenders the hours of credit that they deserve. I know, I've done it. I've spent a lot of my adult professional life working two hundred and eighty hours on an LWP case, only to be given credit for eleven hours. So my public defense hat is very supportive. My administrative hat is shaking. And I'll be candid, and I'll get to that in a little bit. The reason it's shaking is because this is going to require a significant investment to ensure that we comply with the new standards. Okay, maybe we'll go to the next slide. I want to be kind, send a time and leave time for questions. So where we're at right now is at an implementation phase. So the Council on Public Defense is making these recommendations at some time next month, again, to the Washington State Bar Association Board of Governors and to the State Supreme Court. I know a couple of the justices are making it clear that they want these recommendations as quickly as possible. So what they are proposing is a phased implementation. There's no county or municipality in the state of Washington that could adopt those significant amount of changes in public defense within the next twelve months. So there's a recognition of that. And what's being proposed is a phased-in approach over the next three years. So Phase One would start in July of this year. In July to January, there'd be no changes to the caseloads. There would be some changes to the other standards. Again, in the interest of time, I'm not gonna go over the other standard changes, but there are significant changes in other standards when it comes to professional support and those ratios, and those are changing as well. Phase Two would take place in July of twenty twenty-five. So sort of high level here, what they're looking at is in a three-year time period to get to the recommended new caseload maximums, drawing down the current caseload standards, thirty-three percent in the first year, thirty-three percent in the second year, and thirty-three percent in the final year to get to the new adjusted caseloads, standards, maximums that I, that we just took a look at. Obviously, in each year, they go down, right? So in year Phase Two, let's say, for example, the maximum number of adult felony representations would go from one fifty to one ten, and the maximum number of misdemeanors would go from three hundred to two eighty. And you can follow along, right? Phase Three is a further reduction all the way to the final completion of the recommendations in year. Or Phase Three, I should say, Phase Four, I should say.
How are they measuring those years? So Phase Two being July twenty twenty-five, is it starting in July, going through July of twenty twenty-six? Do measure backward in terms of the standards or, I mean, you start applying as of July twenty twenty-five looking forward for that next year?
So when it, yeah, when it comes to, exactly, so what, I had the same question, and it's still an outstanding question. But in Phase Two, exactly, so in January to July, we would need to be assigning cases knowing that when the first change goes into effect, no public defender can represent more than a hundred and ten clients that year. So we're gonna have to be adjusting along the way.
So Phase One changes standards but does not implement the standards?
Correct. Caseload standards. Like I said, there are fourteen standards on public defense. Some of those other standards are probably going to change, but, you know, prioritizing what I think is the most impactful and what the board needs to be thinking about and preparing for are the caseload standards. There are gonna be other changes to the other standards of public defense because they're, they're outdated. They're from nineteen seventy-three.
This plan that is up on the slide, who who created this?
The Council of Public Defense. Again, none of this is adopted, so.
I'm saying, like, so the Supreme, could the Supreme Court adopt it but come up with a totally different implementation schedule?
They could. They could say this is effective next year.
Or give us ten years.
Or give us other, more time. Sure. Yeah, this is what they're proposing. Again, a lot of this is, again, same thing with the case credits, this is what's being proposed, not what's been formally adopted. So, but I will say with great confidence that the caseload standards are going to change. Now, whether they're finally gonna be adopted and what the implementation plan is, is yet to be seen. But to your point, we don't know. They could be changed. But they're, these are also coming, you know, these recommendations are coming from the Council of Public Defense with the support of the Washington Defender Association. So there's a lot of weight behind the recommendations, but they certainly could change their recommendations. So we'll go to the next slide here. So probably what you're asking or thinking about is what would, how would this impact Thurston County Public Defense in year one, two, and three and sort of going forward? The question, the answer, I should say, is I don't know. We are working, we are working on trying to appreciate what these impacts would look like. We have just sent off a ticket through our case management system or through IT for our case management system to to do some, some better data collecting so we can figure out what these impacts would look like. What I've put together is just the current state of the office and staffing levels. We have fourteen felony trial attorneys. Last year, we had a little over fourteen hundred cases, a hundred and twenty-one of those were Class A felonies, a little over eleven hundred Class Bs, you can read the chart, how many trial attorneys we have in misdemeanors in juvenile court, how many contractors we have as well, and how many cases they represented. So what we're trying to do is appreciate right now, if adopted and that case credit system went into place and filings were of the same composition and number in twenty twenty-three, in twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six as we implement these standards, what would it take to comply? And so I'm happy to circle back and come back with better numbers. Anecdotally, yes, Commissioner.
No, under your statement, you might have answered my question.
Well, I I'll just say that I just, I gave a quick preview of what it could look like specifically to, let's say, for the B and C felonies that we were appointed in twenty twenty-three, a little over eleven hundred. Depending on what strata and classification those B and C felonies fell in, if they were, let's say, low or mid-low type felonies, at that current filing rate, we would need five FTE defense attorneys to comply with the standards and probably an additional support set.
Additional five or?
Yes, an additional five. So that's.
Now, can I ask you this? When we were talking about public safety tax and how that's gonna all work, and it was during the budget, I want to say, but you were telling me that there's a pre-existing policy document that basically somehow ties public defense and prosecutor staffing in some way. So are we gonna need to add, if we add fifteen attorneys to your office, are we gonna be required by policy to add fifteen prosecutors?
I think what you're referring to is compensation.
Compensation, parity?
There's parity and compensation.
Not in staffing, structure?
It doesn't speak to parity in staffing levels. This would just be, again, you know, a pretty high-level exercise that I wanted to take a quick look at, if implemented, as proposed, you know, what would that, how would that impact just these general sort of numbers? And again, they're very ballparky. We'll be working to try to get some more specificity. Uh, but again, it's significant, Commissioner.
Thank you. Uh, so when we first initially, and we've had many discussions about this, but, um, based on this new phased caseload, right? And kind of based on those initial numbers that you gave, which you said if we were to go on fully now, it would basically have to, my staff would have to double, my budget would have to double. And so just ballparky again, like, are you still there? Kind of in that number of like, yeah, I'm going to have to double everything by twenty twenty-seven in order to comply with this, just?
Like, is that how, is five how many you currently have doing the eleven twenty-three, and then you'd need ten?
No, that would be, uh, an additional five based on the filings from last year. So if, if we're setting the new caseload maximum standards for our current F T Es, our fourteen trial attorneys, at the forty-seven case credits, let's say, for example, for B and Cs, that's not including the As. The As are much more complicated for me to pull out. Like, I can't tell you how many life without the possibility of parole cases we worked last year. So that's an area we need, I need to be able to tell you because I can tell you right now on the standards, one attorney in my office could only be assigned eight homicides in a year, and that would be their maximum caseload, eight. And we probably had thirty homicide representations last year. So, but setting aside the Class As, um, it would be a five additional just on the Bs and Cs. Again, I've got to tease out what types of Bs and Cs in, that we were pointing to last year and where they would fit in the categories. So we have more work to do on that. And when I threw out doubling, that's a real high-level bump. I, I have no, I don't know, I really don't know.
That was your worst-case scenario?
Pardon? That was my worst-case scenario because at the time, we had that, I think the conversation in November, the, uh, these, I didn't have the benefit of these recommendations. So we really didn't even know what we were even contemplating. But we're taking the next step right now to try to get into the cases we saw in twenty twenty-three because I think twenty twenty-three is a good measuring stick. Obviously, setting aside the COVID years, which were lower overall numbers because, excuse me, because of the pandemic. Um, and then we'll have the benefit of this year as well. But I am, you know, obviously, um, you know, when I said my administrative hat is shaking a little bit, it is because I am trying to forecast as best I can the impacts of the standard changes. Um, and again, it's really not a matter of if, it's when, and to what degree. Um, and I still don't have, you know, until they adopt the standards and direct when the implementation date is, and if it's phased, when does it start? To Rob's question earlier, um, we should know more here in the next two or three months.
There was a great chart in this article, and I took a picture of it on my phone, but it's probably in here, maybe not. But it was, I think it was produced by the Washington State Association of Counties, and it showed the, um, it showed public defense costs.
Yeah.
Like, just rising in state compensation level has stayed exactly static over the huge period of time while the costs have, like, tripled. So, I mean, the gaps are just getting huger and huger, which is why for the lawsuit, and we, you know, I mean, this just makes that lawsuit all the more legitimate and, and...
Makes the issue, well, I'll say this, it, it makes the issue more legitimate than it ever has been, right? And it is a breaking point, in my opinion, um, for a variety of reasons. But, yeah, I mean, again, over time, the, the work's gotten more complicated and complex. It's driven by case law and additional effective counsel roles and responsibilities. Obviously, and those, all these other things have changed, right? Like, your average case these days for a defender to effectively represent a client under the rules of professional conduct and strictly when that has forty hours of body cam footage, uh, you know, that wasn't contemplated, uh, the year before I was born in nineteen seventy-three. So the work's gotten more complex, the ethical responsibilities have grown. Um, and this is a reflection of, uh, you know, of that work. So I'll certainly be circling back with hopefully better projections of impacts. I'm right now working on if what was proposed becomes adopted because that's really, I think, the best methodology for me right now to try to appreciate, um, the impacts. Um, but maybe we'll move to the next slide, mindful of time here. I do want to highlight that, uh, at least as to caseloads, again, I'll have to circle back to some of the other issues like support staff ratios because those standards, that particular standard in our current standards is going to change as well. But I want to talk a little bit about independent contracting attorneys. And so independent contracting attorneys that associate with our office, uh, taking negligent defense cases, also have to certify to the State Supreme Court in that certification that they're complying with the negligent defense standards. So when these standards change, they apply only, not only to obviously our staff defenders, but to all our contractors. Right now, our contractors comply with negligent defense standards, as do we. But when they're lowered, I still need those contractors to associate with Thurston County Public Defense. We always have legally conflict of interest cases that we need them to represent the clients on. The problem's going to be in terms of them complying and the compensation that we're currently providing them. The compensation that we currently, uh, current compensation that they receive is adequate for them to associate with us, but it's going to be wholly inadequate if they have to comply with, then, when they have to comply with the new standards. So it's a long way of saying that there's, are going to be additional expense to public defense in Thurston County on how we deliver it with our contract attorneys. I E., if I expect a contract attorney to contract with our office in the new caseload, with new caseloads, I'm going to have to pay them more because they can't keep the same compensation for half the cases that they got before because they have overhead, they have a living, they have families, et cetera. They're, they're not staff with us, so I hate to pour some more, well... It's another financial challenge in terms of the implementation of this as contractors. So I don't want it to just be, okay, let's focus on the staff at, at T C P D. I have to consider my contractors as well. The support staff ratios will change as well, and that is impactful, right? So going from one to four support, uh, staff for every attorney, um, is going to change to one to three, and there's going to be some additional changes to other areas. Space needs, put that out there.
You're giving me heartbreak just...
That's why I'm here. Not to give you heartburn, uh, but I'm here to, um, to have the information shared and to let you know that I have been intimately involved in these conversations statewide in the implementation of this. And as of Friday, uh, so the timing of today's meeting, uh, was good because we had some finality on Friday that the recommendations that I've shared have now moved on to the State Supreme Court and the Washington State Law Association, Commissioner.
In terms of space needs, um, just, I think regardless of how it's phased out, I think it, it's the direction that we're going to be going in, um, as a state. So I'm wondering if this is conversations that you've had with central services as we're talking about remodeling, right? Like, the, the additional capacity that you might need and pla- starting to plan for that. That way, it's not something that four years from now, it, we're going to be in a spot where...
Yeah. So in, uh, so, yes, short answer is yes, I have it with the, with the architecture firm on our remodel. Uh, what we had originally proposed a year and a half ago, we went back to those drawings with this in mind, and I have made as many potential office spaces in that plan as possible. So what was a, one designated space has now been within reason and feasible and cost, within cost, has been divided up into, uh, more than one space in anticipation of the need for additional staff. So, yes, I have, um, I have made those recommendations. They're in the final plans now, uh, but, uh, certainly did, um, tried to squeeze as much space, uh, out of that building floor as possible if, if and when we, uh, need more staff. I'll go to the last slide and then just try to leave a little time. That's just a flow chart on how these recommendations will go forward. So they'll go from, um, Council on Public Defense to the Washington State Board of Governors, then on to the State Supreme Court, and the creation of the new negligent defense standards from WISPA and the State Supreme Court adopting those into court bowls. And then the last slide, uh, is funding. Right, so as Commissioner Minzer pointed out, uh, you know, State Office of Public Defense is a pass-through for compliance with negligent defense standards for the state of Washington. Their county budget, excuse me, their budget to distribute amongst all thirty-nine counties is five point eight million dollars annually, and it has been very static for a long time. Thurston, we receive about three percent of our budget, uh, from State O P D. And so ninety-seven percent comes from the county or, or the grants. Needless to say, statewide public defense funding has to increase. And, um, that's, it is, uh, Rob and I have talked about this. I've talked about it with you all before. This is nothing new in terms of the need for increased state funding. But what has happened is inaction on state funding. So, um, but with these new standards, there is no way around it that the state has to contribute to, to fund public defense. So we, as a county, can comply with, uh, with the standards because that's, at the end of the day, that's my responsibility as the Director of Public Defense for this county, is to ensure that we are complying with any state standards and these that are going to change and that we do not, um, violate state standards and put the county at risk. Right now, currently, uh, there was a bill earlier in this year, the Legislative Breakfast, that was the only topic I mentioned. I did, uh, remind, uh, you know, the last time we had that Legislative Breakfast, I think it was four or five years ago, and the number one priority from WASAC was public defense funding, and the O P D budget of five point eight million dollars has not changed. And the bill that was floated earlier this year to increase public defense did not make it. And I know it was a short session, and, um, but there are things I think that the board can do. I've spoken with Larry Jefferson, the Director of Office of Public Defense. If, uh, the county commissioners would like to write a letter, uh, in support of increased state funding for public defense to Mr. Jefferson, he indicated to me that those letters of support go a long way. Um, so that is one potential ask, and obviously, working with, um, with our lobbyists and others, uh, in other counties around the state, municipalities, to hopefully finally get a bill, um, that's sponsored, uh, that has, um, support to address what is an impending significant change in public defense in terms of expense.
I was going to ask about the lawsuit. And I've received updates on it as I've attended meetings, and, you know, it's, it's moving along. But at the previous, so I serve at, on the interbranch advisory committee, and you know this. And the comments from Justice Gonzalez was a little bit of trepidation to address this with the lawsuit pending. And so, uh, I know that they've been kind of waiting to see what the results are going to be, and, um, that was kind of his comments during, during that meeting. And so I'm wondering, how does basically all of this connect with the parallel suit that's coming along that is basically about the funding piece of it? And, um, and so I'm just wondering if there's kind of a nexus there, or will there be? Or is there, could discussions going to be paused? You know, is the state going, State Supreme Court going, continue, going to continue, going to pause those future conversations until there is a decision made on that?
I don't think so. So I haven't had those conversations, uh, directly with Justice Gonzalez or, um, uh, about that issue. My impression from the meetings I've attended is, um, that they will be moving forward regardless of the, the status of that lawsuit. I would tend to agree with, um, that opinion that, um, funding public defense under what's being recommended in, in the new implementation of the standards, I don't think is a good strategy to bank that, you know, one lawsuit's going to be successful. I think there's maybe a combination of strategies that could take place to get to, uh, to get to the funding levels that are necessary to implement, um, these changes. But that, I'm also, that's also a world that I don't really work in. But I, you know, it, I think it would behoove counties, including Thurston County, to be working on alternative solutions to fund public defense for this community absent, um, uh, absent this lawsuit. And, you know, whether it's lawsuit's successful, or there's a settlement, there's an agreement, whatever may come, I, yeah, I, I'm not an expert on that, but... Okay, I know we're a little bit past, and I don't want to take up, uh, any more time.
Can you drop this slide, just in case Commissioner...
Yeah.
Edwards has his hand up, I can't see. Commissioner Edwards does have his hand up. Okay, sorry, Commissioner Edwards, first time I could see your hand, go ahead.
I guess, uh, you've kind of talked around it a little bit, but I, my main interest, I guess, at this point is the unfunded mandate concept and how that may play into this, so.
Yes, thank you. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, no, no, so, I mean, it sounds like it's going to be a direct effect to every county in the state. So, kind of like, why not, you know?
Yes, Commissioner, yeah, to your point, uh, you know, this is, it's been status quo in terms of underfunding and unfunded mandates, if you will, uh, for public defense. And I think, uh, it's high time for change, and the state needs to contribute to public defense that they have wholly inadequately underfunded for a long time. That's my opinion, that's not the opinion of others. It is the opinion of others, but I'm not expressing it on their behalf. Okay.
Anything else for Patrick?
No, I will, uh, I'll try, as we progress, uh, and get a little bit harder numbers on what these impacts would look like and any updates, I'll be back, uh, before the board, uh, and keep you apprised and abreast of, uh, the next steps.
Thank you, Patrick, for this. And then, um, if anything comes up in the interbranch meeting this quarter, I'll be sure to report out. I know this has been a topic of conversation there, so, as well.
Yeah. Yeah, and, I mean, to your point, this is being discussed in every corner of the state of Washington, from every municipality to every county. And so I'm sure your colleagues around the state are also very interested in, um, addressing the funding for public defense. Okay. Thank you all.
Sorry, before you go, there was an ask from Patrick to write a letter. And I would be supportive of that. So just want to make sure that, that ask gets addressed.
A, a letter to, sorry, to the, to the...
If you could, uh, so...
It's about increasing their budget?
Correct, yeah. So, uh, a letter from this board, support, supporting the Office of Public Defense, uh, increasing their ten-one-oh-one funding to fund counties, specifically Thurston County, in increasing their public defense funding. And I can, I'm, I'm happy to work with you on some language, Commissioner, to send out a draft to, uh, your seatmates, um, to consider adopting. But, uh, he did indicate to me that, um, tho- those letters of support from, from county commissioners are very persuasive.
Okay, take a look at that.
Okay.
Bring that to the board.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Okay.
All right, next up on this morning's work session agenda is Thurston twenty forty-five quarterly update. We have Ashley arrive, I see, from planning and development here to... address that. Patrick?
I am, yeah, thank you. Oh, listen, if it's already loaded up, I can just... I don't mind if anyone...
I'm not seeing it.
Okay. Just give me a second. Share my screen.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is really a conversation, um, that we hope to have with you about Thurston twenty forty-five, so no decisions today. But as we've come before the board over the last few months, asking for approval on contracts related to the grant and consultants, seems to be a lot of interest, and we're excited that there's a lot of... um, seems to be a lot of interest, and we're excited that there's a lot of interest. And so we really just want to create quarterly forums to give you an update on the work that is happening. Um, although it might be, well, it's probably going to be quite a few months before you actually are being asked to review things and make recommendations. Um, just want to let you know that we're actively out in the community and staying busy. So we'll go through a short presentation, um, of course, Ashley Rye, Community Planning Manager, and I'm joined here today by Miriam Biazian, our Outreach and Education Lead on Thurston twenty forty-five as well, as well as another, or, um, a lot of other topics in our Community Planning Division. And then we also have Amelia Schwartz, um, online in case you ask questions that are beyond our capacity. Um, she's been doing all the tracking of the project while Maya is out on maternity leave. So this, this timeline is already out of date. We're really excited it's already out of date. The legislature decided, um, just last week to extend the deadline out to the end of twenty twenty-five. So I'll get to that in a second, but we are welcoming the extra six months to get through this, this comprehensive plan update. Um, we spent, uh, late twenty twenty-two and early twenty twenty-three scoping that update. And then we immediately shifted into gear doing outreach. I mean, this was just general community outreach, and we are going to provide an update on the outreach that was conducted. Basically, we've done two rounds of outreach to date and just finished up the last one about a month ago. We are getting ready to go to the Planning Commission, um, next month. We are going to go through this project chapter by chapter. Um, there's a lot of chapters to review. We're kind of starting with easier ones that don't have as much community interest or won't probably be seeing, um, as many updates. And then, once the Planning Commission is done with their review, we'll be shifting into review with the board.
Can I ask a question? Is that okay? Which topics are, are those?
Yeah, I think right here. So there are a few that are not moving forward, um, because there were optional elements and there just really wasn't funding in the budget, um, to move them forward at this time. The board can always decide to do that later. But this is kind of a breakdown by, by month, um, of the chapters that are going to be in review. So we're going to start off with just, uh, um, an overview with the Planning Commission of all of the outreach and the comments we've received to date. Um, and then we're going to have them look at the Historic and Archaeological Resources Chapter, which we've been doing work on with the Historic Commission and Tribes. Um, starting in May, we're going to start, we're going to look at the Capital Facilities and Utilities Chapter. And these are chapters we've been working really closely with our Public Works, um, partners on as well as our, um, external, um, utility provider on. And then we've got Environment, Recreation, and Open Space. And that is also a topic we've been working closely with Public Works on because it's where the, all the parks policies live. While we're doing all this work with the Planning Commission, behind the scenes, we'll be working with our consultant, doing a lot of the technical analysis required for housing, um, and climate. And so, once we move into June, we hope to start bringing some of that initial analysis before the Planning Commission, um, as well as minor updates to the Land Use, um, Chapter and the Natural Resource Lands. And Natural Resource Lands are forestry, agricultural, mineral lands. Um, and then Climate and Transportation are kind of the, the two big ones, um, that we'll be reviewing this summer with the Planning Commission. Really trying to spread it out as much as we can so they have time to sit with these chapters, but it's going to be an aggressive timeline no matter what.
Which topics did not get funded? And you said the board can choose to do so, but I'm guessing in order to fit with the timeline and that extension, it would have, we would have to decide to fund it by a certain point.
Um, it would, it would most likely be like an off-cycle update. And so, once we get through this big comprehensive plan update, the, um, chapters or topics that weren't funded were the Economic Development Chapter, um, which pairs really nicely with the Future Land Use Map. Um, if the board wants to make any decisions about industrial, commercial lands in rural and incorporated county or grand mound UGA. The other piece that we are hoping to do is that integration of the Industrial Land Studies, all that data that was gathered. You know, what would the board like to do with that data? What is, what is the board's vision for economic development here in the county? Um, and then Future Land Use Map, um, as well as the Health Chapter. So then, I mean, there might be minor updates to those chapters coming out of Climate and Housing, but we're not taking like a wholesale look at them.
Sorry, one, can I ask one more question? Uh, I'm just gonna, how much was the ask for all of these?
About two hundred thousand for just the comprehensive plan update component of that. Um, and we are actively looking for grants, especially as it pertains to Grand Mound, um, and an economic development strategy there.
There's one that I was presented with on Thursday at the Alliance for Healthy South Sound. I wrote down, I think it's Department of Commerce, money for comp plan. Um, they call it sound choices, like Puget Sound, and it could be related to salmon. I was talking about the salmon recovery pieces and I think there's money available, so you might want to look at that.
It's, it's coming, it's coming online soon. Um, uh, our new Chair of the Planning Commission, Derek Day, has been instrumental at the state.
I wrote it down because it sounded like consistent with my constituents that wanted, and, well, not, actually, that one came from Salmon Recovery Council. The Puget Sound Partnerships legislative priorities included funding the salmon recovery elements. And so, if there's money.
We are, it is, it is on our radar and Commissioner Day is keeping us apprised of when that money will be released. Right now, they are requesting feedback via survey on the grant funding. Um, but yeah, we're excited about that. And then this is just a quick look at our team. Um, this is a, a big effort. Um, you're most familiar with our community planning team that's been working on it. And we just want to let you know that we've been working across all the departments in the county, starting to reach out to them about mid-last year and continuing to work with them. Um, and then, as of just last week, we have our official contract signed with our consultants. So our consulting team is comprised of Burke Consulting and Makers, um, and they're out of Seattle. We also have Cascadia Consulting, um, they're doing a lot of work on the climate guidance with the state right now. Um, we also have contracts with Thurston Regional Planning Council. They're, they're helping with the housing renovation and regional land capacity analysis. And we're working on scoping a contract with Farr and Pierce to do, um, the transportation updates and some of the environmental review work. So it's a big team. And I'm going to switch gears to Miriam to talk about some of the outreach that we've done to date.
Okay, well, hi, everyone. I'm Miriam Biazian, Education and Outreach Specialist with Community Planning. Um, and I've been leading the outreach on the Comprehensive Plan Update. So this past, past year, we've been, uh, focused on talking to Thurston County community members um, to find out really what their vision is for the county over the next twenty years. So some of the things we've completed, we translated our flyers into Spanish, Vietnamese, and Korean and posted them all across the county. Uh, we boosted social media posts in multiple languages. We sent our flyer, flyer via email to county high schools, um, to get to the parents and staff there. We send regular upma-, uh, email updates to an opt-in email list. We've posted in the Friday Five, the Thurston Insider, we had a direct email to all county staff. We have monthly roundtables with the Chehalis, Squaxin, and Nisqually tribes. Um, and then we've been doing just direct, uh, person-to-person out, direct outreach through diverse events all across the county. So this is many of the events that we've attended, we really were trying to reach a diverse audience um, and hear voices that we may not typically hear from. Uh, so we went to farmers markets, Dia de la Familia with Cielo. We had a great Spanish interpreter with that one to help us with that. Um, the Juneteenth event in Lacey, Nisqually Pride and Health Fair, and many more. Um, some of these were presentations, some we might have had a table or a booth, and some I just got some clipboards and surveys and walked around and talked to people. So here are some of the pictures from the events over the summer. Um, that middle picture is my daughter, actually. She went to many of these events with me. And, uh, when you have a seven-year-old come up to you with a clipboard and talk to you about the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan Update, you're probably going to take that survey. So she was pretty instrumental in getting some of these survey results.
And what, what was that activity there on the left?
So this was an activity that we did for kids. Um, we had just kind of these buckets and then pennies. And so we had topics that kind of aligned with the, uh, comp plan chapters, but more kid friendly. So like environment, parks, you know, helping people, that kind of thing. And so kids were able to kind of vote and tell, um, us what was most important to them. So just kind of a way to get more of the kids involved. Um, that's one of the things I've been doing a lot too with this outreach is really letting kids know that they have a voice in this too. This is their community, they're the ones going to be dealing with it in twenty years when this is up. So just because they can't vote doesn't mean that they can't be involved.
I just want to say that, um, I appreciated this. My daughter, uh, was very excited. She always likes the booths with activities for them, and so she was really excited to participate in this. So I thought that was, that was pretty great that, you know, this was being done. So I'm, I want to guess thank you and, uh, for that because I think it's right. And, uh, with that comes the parents too, right? And parent participation, so that was a great idea, thank you.
So we had about, uh, over five hundred fifty people from across the county that took the survey in twenty twenty-three. So this map here, I've been kind of trying to track the breakdown of who's taking the surveys and who's engaged by zip code. Um, so this is actually a pretty decent dispersal. Um, you can still see there's a little room for improvement, probably in the South County zip codes, but this is actually an increase from the twenty twenty-two outreach that we did in South County. So I do think that us kind of reaching out a little more directly to these areas has been helping. So what we've heard from the surveys and the conversations that we had, um, is that people love Thurston County because it's beautiful, it's rural with lots of open space and great parks. Um, they're concerned about the unhoused populations, crime, rising cost of living, especially when it comes to housing and protecting our environment. Uh, some of the stories I heard included a man who was frustrated and concerned because his college graduate son had to move back home. He was unable to afford living expenses on his own. Um, at the Juneteenth event, they were giving out free barbecue, so there was like really, really long line for the free barbecue. So I just had a bunch of flyers and clipboards and I just went down the line and talked to people and got them to take surveys. Um, there was one woman, she had a, a baby in a stroller and she was carrying her toddler. Um, and the conversation I had with her was around safety and how she wished there was more, uh, diverse events across the county where she could feel safe bringing her kids. Um, and at Dia de la Familia, I spoke with, uh, two sisters and a mom who were a little concerned about having enough clean water in the future. So coming up, we'll go to some of the same events we went to last year. We learned a lot going to a lot of these events. There's kind of a sweet spot with events, sometimes they're too big and so you get lost in the vans and beer gardens and funnel cakes. So there's a really good, sweet spot for being able to connect with the community members. Um, we're going to host topic-specific workshops, um, on climate and housing for the community so that they can give detailed feedback on those chapters as well as the rest of the plan as well. Um, we're going to continue coordinating with our city partners and sharing those monthly email updates. Um, we're going to collect community feedback on the chapters early and often. So one of the ways we're making the involvement a little more accessible is that we're going to provide clear and concise descriptions of the changes in these story maps that are on our website. So it's kind of like the Cliff Notes version for people. So if they don't have time to read the entire chapter or, you know, thousands of pages of the document, um, then they can still provide informed, meaningful feedback. And you guys can help us. Um, you can let us know if we're missing any groups, if there's an event we need to be at or an organization we need to touch base, base with, please let us know. Um, help spread the word about the Comprehensive Plan Update and what it means to the community. Um, help people submit comments and in general engage in the update process. And, uh, feel free to join us at any of the events we'll be doing this year. Event season will be here before we know it. Um, and we do keep an up-to-date calendar on events that we'll be at and kind of talk about the topics and activities we'll be engaged with.
What is Thurston Forty-five Summit? Did you mention that?
Thurston, the, the Thurston twenty forty-five summits, those are going to be the topic-specific workshops.
And so we're really thinking about, um, we've been chatting with the consultant. Um, we want to ensure as many people can participate as possible. And so we went back and forth to be sort of a, a bigger Saturday summit versus a focus group, which would end up being smaller and a much bigger time commitment. Um, and so we're looking at having those in South, South County. Um, and so maybe Rochester, Grand Mound for one, and Tenino or Yelm for the other one. And so it'd really be a three to four hour summit and you could sort of come at the beginning for more of an open house style, get general information, um, and then do like breakout sessions. So if there are areas of housing you really want to talk about, you know, being able to have these facilitated conversations around the room. So more to come on that. Um, we are waiting for some of the initial analysis to be complete, so we have something to share, um, and then get folks back. That's really all we have, other than just being open to questions, ideas.
Anyone?
Thank you.
Yeah? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, next up, Commissioner Items. We have a Commissioner's check-in today, right, at two o'clock? But. Wait for Commissioner here. Commissioner Edwards, did you have a Commissioner item that you needed to do this for? Nope. Anyone? Anyone?
I can wait till this afternoon.
Yeah, I think I've got one, but I'll wait till this afternoon, I'll have time. So if there's no further items on today's regular agenda, we will be adjourned.